All right, we've got 6:30, so go ahead and hold me to order. A couple of housekeeping things, I'm probably staring at my phone, but that's what my agenda is, so I'm not being ridiculous. Also, I am on call, so if this thing makes a crazy noise, I'm gonna have to step out for at least a few minutes. Uh, it shouldn't happen, but why do you know? So, number two is public comments, 15 minutes, if anybody's got anything they'd like to share. The mic's probably not on, so just like the background, back it up, and let us know your name. We've got 15 minutes, if there's anything they'd like to address.
Sure. Can you hear me?
We have to take it out of there.
Can you hear me? Is that better? Uh, this might be better. Uh, my name is Sanjay Krishnan. I am here because my stepson Cody Dagel is on the junior Spartans football team, and my stepdaughter Ariana Dagel is on the Pembroke junior cheer team, Spartan cheer team. And I'm new to Pembroke, actually, we don't, uh, my girlfriend Sarah and I, we actually live in Deerfield, so we're kinda new to the Pembroke Academy and this part of town over the last couple of months. And the reason why we're here today is, um, as football and cheer season's kinda kicked off, and we've been doing fundraising events and just trying to promote our programs, one thing that a lot of the parents, uh, some of the frustrations we've seen is that there's a sense that our programs, because it's not school affiliated, even though it carries the Pembroke Spartan name, there's not a lot of support in the community, as well as from the high school. And we're not here to ask for money or anything like that, but, you know, it's hard to do fundraising events and have practices at facilities when we're getting a lot of pushback of facilities not available, um, you know, storage for equipment, uh, things like that. And, you know, as an outsider, I'm kinda thinking about, it's like, this is kind of a feeder team for the high school team, and these kids are not getting developed, uh, at an earlier age, where they might show up in ninth grade to this high school, and be at more of a advanced level. And that would lead to more successful, uh, program in, at the high school level. And I grew up in Michigan, and that's kinda how it worked, but, you know, middle schools got from the elementary schools, and the middle schools fed into the high schools. So kids were getting developed at a younger age athletically, and, uh, you know, being a physician, I also know that athletics leads to better academic achievement as well. Student athletes generally have, you know, more academic achievement, all the way from the elementary school level, all the way through college. And, you know, having played multiple sports myself, it certainly helped me in my career and just, uh, learning how to adopt, you know? Sports teach you, teaches you a lot of life lessons about, uh, defeat, um, you know, winning with humility, being gracious in defeat. And I think especially since, uh, with COVID and a lot of social isolation and all the cyberbullying and all the, uh, you know, evils of social media, I think sports would be a great thing for the community in terms of bringing the community together, having community events. And so we're just here to implore the school board to help us, um, you know, give us support in the community in terms of making, you know, facilities more available, if, uh, you know, you have any influence over that. So, and we're not asking for a free time or anything like that, but just more availability so that, you know, these eight, nine, 10-year-old girls and boys, uh, can get the practice time that they need, and not so much pushback and, you know, fundraising opportunities, you know, here, if we were able to have a cheer competition, that's kind of a big moneymaker. And then I know for us, being from Deerfield, um, I believe Deerfield has a contract, so for every kid from Deerfield that comes to Pembroke, my understanding is, you know, that brings in money to Pembroke for each Deerfield kid. And one thing that's attractive to kids and their parents are successful sports programs. And so I think if we invest more time and more community support, and sure, some money as well into kids at a younger age to develop them, to expose them to different sports and give them the opportunities to play and, you know, develop some of those skills, I think would also improve all the high school programs. And it's a great, uh, community morale, you know, to build the spirit of the community and bring the community together. So we're just here to kind of implore and, you know, ask for the school board's assistance with that, so we can have more successful programs, but in turn, that it also lends itself to having a more happier, healthier community, and also lends success at the high school level. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you guys care if I respond? We don't really do discussion, but... Oh, yeah, absolutely, if you want to talk at first.
Before, I figured I might as well talk while we're on the same stuff.
Sure.
I'm a lot smaller, so I'm gonna take this down. So my name's Ashley. I think it's on.
Yep.
Okay, there's nobody, you should hear me. Um, so I actually grew up in this community, I'm part of the board at the Pembroke Friends of Football. Um, in 2001, they were going to cut 2000 and 2001 cheerleading from the middle school, and I came to speak at this very board, which is really crazy. This program was developed in 2001, which is right after we saved them from cutting the cheerleading squad at the Pembroke school. I believe that this program is also just as important. Um, the football team, like, we didn't have much of a football team at all when I was here, and they've developed so much since I was here. And I just think it's so important for them to share the space and the time. It's hard for this team to feel like they're not a part of it, you know? For these kids to be able to grow and come to the school, and the fact that they're coming from all different towns and already knowing each other in the program is really great. So we're just looking for support as far as using the fields, um, using the school, being able to fundraise more, and keep the program going so that it continues to grow with the school. Um, I really loved this community growing up, so it's really nice to see it expanding. So that's just my little piece, thank you.
Thank you, invasion. Um, so I'm gonna give you a very unsatisfying start answer, but it's honest. So, um, so typically, I always encourage people, the board always encourages people, um, to just follow proper procedure, right? So I'll sort of lay that out, and then what I would ask is if you, I don't know if you would be the person or one representative from the organization, can contact me, if you like, if you feel like you've already done any of these things and it hasn't gotten you to where you want to be, all right? So I think, and I think correctly if I'm wrong, um, being that this is a primarily middle school program, I think I would start with Ms. Cagney. Um, and then if you have things that, that you feel are unresolved, um, I think go to Mr. Vazina, who's the athletic director here at PA. Um, and beyond that, if you still feel unsatisfied, contact Ms. Sherman. Um, and again, if you, if you've hit any of those steps already and you've got questions, um, reach out to me. If, if you wanna start there, just send me an email on, here are the specific issues we have, and here's kind of who we've talked to so far and the responses we've gotten, I can kind of help guide where to go next. Um, I don't wanna make any promises, because I don't know specifically what we're talking about. Um, I know there were some things mentioned, like storage, and I know we had our own storage for the school problems just last year. Um, we had a white building that was full of desks and stuff, and our own football team couldn't store things in there anymore. Um, I know that the local, the softball program has been in with issues about not being able to get enough keys for the building, and that's something that, at least the board at the time, how it was made up, was pretty steadfast that we didn't wanna give out more keys, because we've had a lot of problems in the past. So, again, no promises either way, but if you wanna contact me, let me know the steps that you've taken, I can kind of help you navigate where to go next. That's fair. Thanks for coming and talking to us.
Sorry, so it's I'm new here, who are?
Sorry, my name is Andy Camm, if you go on the SOU website, there's a tab for school boards, and my email is on there, but it's acamid, A-C-A-M-I-D-G-E, at SOU53.org. Um, but it's probably easier to get from the website.
Okay.
But yeah, I mean, my phone number's on there too, so if you wanna chat, feel free to give me a call. Um, but yeah, shoot me an email and we'll, we'll figure out where to go.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming. Um, I think I know why Jerry's here, so do you have any public comments, Jerry, or?
No public comments.
Okay, then we'll move on. Um, then I remember three is agenda review. Do we have anything? All right, so nothing there. And so that raises number four, so we have Chair Jerry Flurry here, um, from the Town Pembroke CIP Committee, to give us a look at the town's CIP report for the year.
Good evening, everyone. Is it on?
Yeah. I can hear you.
Okay, I got a blue light, so that must mean it's on. Uh, good evening, for the record, my name is Jerry Flurry, I'm the chairman of Pembroke's Capital Improvements Program Committee. Uh, this evening, I'd like to take a little bit of time to go through, uh, what the committee did, what we looked at this year, uh, and I will go through it for the entirety of the town and wrap up with, uh, school issues. Uh, if you refer to, uh, I sent some information ahead that you should've got copies of, and there's a section of the CIP report, uh, I believe it begins on page 15.
Hey, Jerry.
Yes?
If you, I know you're gonna talk for a minute, if you wanna come and sit, you're more involved than.
No, it's all right.
Okay.
Uh, good practice. Uh, I believe it's on, begins on page 15, and it's the section of the report where all of the items are listed, and it's where the committee voted to rank the, uh, the various projects. Uh, beginning with the municipal facilities for the town, uh, town put in a request appropriated from taxes for $125,000. Uh, that's simply an appropriation amount. The voted committee was one high priority and five medium. On the expenditure side, there's a landfill stabilization issue at the transfer station, uh, which is gonna require the, uh, addition to a crushed stone around the, uh, the, uh, the facility where there are large blocks of granite, and some of that is washed out, so smaller pieces of stone are gonna be put into that. They expense about $10,000. That got five high priority and one medium priority vote from the committee. Uh, repaving of the, uh, town hall parking lot for $150,000. Uh, that didn't fare so well with the committee, got one medium vote and four low, five low priority votes. Uh, seemed to be some question as exactly why we would wanna be doing that, there were some areas of rough pavement, uh, we were told it was a trip hazard, but the committee didn't completely buy that. Uh, going on to the safety center, let me tell you, I say that all of the town buildings, library, safety center, DPW, town hall, all are, uh, supported by this one cap, the same capital reserve. So at the safety center, they're looking to replace, uh, digital cameras. Uh, it's a situation not dissimilar to the one that, uh, that you have here in school district, where you've got a mix of equipment, some of it's analog, some of it's digital, it doesn't all, uh, play well together. Uh, that's an expenditure of $150,000, that got six high priority votes from the committee. Uh, last in that category is, uh, uh, issues at the library. There are shingles that are being lost off the library building, and there are problems with the fascia and some of the painting on the building. Uh, the town library is not wood or vinyl, it's constructed out of something called a hardy plank. Uh, it's kind of like, uh, a composite, uh, concrete product, and there's quite a bit of deterioration in the fascia area on the north side, that if something isn't done soon, uh, there'll be a hole clean through to the inside. Uh, it's gonna cost about $100,000 to fix those issues and replace the roof. The committee gave that four high priority votes and two medium. Uh, next is the town clock capital reserve, uh, there's a request for $3,000 from taxes, uh, no expenditures anticipated for this year. The committee ranked that two high priority, three medium, and one low. I will editorialize there, I was not the one low vote, I have a reputation for not liking the town clock. Uh, property revaluation, uh, update, uh, every five years, we have to do a revale of the entire town, uh, it's an expensive proposition, and so we put $30,000 a year into that, uh, so that when the time comes to do the revale, uh, it doesn't cause a hit on the, on the tax rate. That got two high priority, three medium, and one low from the committee.
Just wanna clarify, since you clarified, I was the low vote on that. Yeah. Kinda in somewhere, we wanna go back to the 70s, right?
Uh, 50s would be maybe, mate. Uh, cemetery, uh, capital reserve, uh, appropriation from taxes for 10,000, that got five medium priority votes and one low. Uh, repairs to the cemetery, specifically the Evergreen Cemetery, uh, at the entrance, uh, that's going to require about $9,600 to complete, that got five medium and one low. Uh, fire equipment, major, uh, major equipment capital reserve request, fire engines cost well over a million dollars apiece now, and, uh, so we put money aside every year so that when we do have to replace, uh, a piece of equipment, uh, that the cash is there. That got six high priority votes. There are no expenditures for capital, uh, uh, capital equipment from the fire department this year. Fire department, small equipment capital reserve request, $40,000 from taxes, that got five high priority and one medium priority vote. Again, no expenditures anticipated this year. It goes on to the ambulance, uh, which is a new entity for us, uh, the last few years, uh, after Triton had to be dissolved. Uh, a lot of money has been put into, uh, ambulance service. Uh, there's a capital reserve established to, uh, be able to fund new and replacement vehicles and equipment. Uh, the equipment is very expensive, as you'll see when we get to our next item, but that got, uh, four high priority and two medium priority votes from the committee. Uh, on the expenditure side, there's something called a cardiac monitor. Uh, it was explained to us that the cardiac monitor that's, uh, currently in use in one of the vehicles, uh, can no longer be serviced and, uh, needs to be replaced. That got six high priority votes, and that was a cost of $66,648. Sounds kind of precise, but that's the number we were given. Uh, the police department, uh, request for cruiser appropriations from taxes for $65,000. This is a, pretty much an annual thing. They've got five high priority votes and one medium. Uh, replacement of a cruiser for $68,500, that got four high priority and two mediums. The police department, small equipment capital reserve request from taxes, $5,000, that six high priority votes. And this is kind of like a cash in, cash out, however, what that $5,000 appropriation is doing, it's really bringing that capital reserve back to its regular balance. Uh, there is a $5,000 expenditure anticipated for this year, and that's to replace bulletproof vests. Again, the committee gave that, gave that six high priority votes. Moving on to public works, the highway division, an appropriation from taxes for $325,000, it got six high priority votes from the committee. Looking at the expenditure side of things, a one-ton dump truck, uh, for $190,000, uh, five high priority and one medium. I guess the only thing I can say there is that the, uh, people like to see that the plow goes by when it's snowing, and absent that dump truck, that necessarily would not happen. Uh, a sidewalk plow for $8,500. It isn't really the entire plow, Pembroke has a device called a trackless, and you put various attachments onto it. You can put a brush aug on it for clearing roadsides, uh, in this case, there's a, a snow plow attachment that goes on for clearing sidewalks, and the one that we have is, uh, in bad shape, uh, has been a lot of welding done on it to keep it going, but it, uh, it really needs to be, uh, to be replaced. So, uh, uh, that got three high priority and three medium priority votes. The other item of expenditure was $60,000 for a, uh, a portable vehicle lift. A lot of the town's vehicles are serviced right at the public works department, and Pembroke has never had a proper vehicle lift. Uh, if, they, they have ways of getting the vehicles up, elevated somewhat, uh, by driving them up on, onto ramps and the like, uh, not the safest thing in the world, and many times the town mechanic is working there and is by himself. It's not a situation where, uh, uh, you wanna be, uh, more risk tolerant, if something goes wrong, uh, and that vehicle falls and the individual's caught under it, uh, it would cost us a whole lot more than the cost of a ramp to, to recover from that. So that ramp is a, uh, a $60,000 expenditure, uh, it got three high priority, two medium, and one low. Uh, there's an item in the, in the CIP for roads, now this is actually not a capital reserve, the way most of the CIP items are, this is part of the town operating budget, and it involves, uh, appropriation of $750,000. Uh, those of you who've been around for a while will remember that used to be a half a million, and then it's been ticking up a little. Uh, we've got more and more roads to cover, and the price of asphalt keeps going up, and there is a replacement strategy for either rebuilding or resurfacing our roads. So, uh, that $750,000 appropriation got six high priority votes. Again, uh, the only thing I can say there is that the committee doesn't like to drive through potholes. Uh, road infrastructure capital reserve request from taxes, $75,000. Uh, that particular capital reserve can be used to replace major culverts, if we have bridges that need to be repaired, uh, the money can be spent for that purpose. Uh, that got four high priority and two medium priority votes. Recreation, uh, there's an appropriation from taxes for $20,000, that got one medium vote and five low priority. And I guess I have to, uh, to share with you that, uh, things were not the greatest with recreation over the last few years, there were projects that were done that were not done well, and, uh, a lot of corrective action had to be taken, so it's kind of, uh, left a stigma on anything that recreation wants to do, and I think that carried into, into the boat. Uh, on the replacement side of things for this year, there's a, a gazebo roof for $5,000, and that got four medium priority and two low priority votes. That gazebo was originally an Eagle Scout project done in 1997, I believe, so the roof is, uh, just about seeing the end of its useful life, but if you don't put money into, into the gazebo in a few more years, you're gonna get to the point that you have to tear it down and get rid of it, uh, because if the water starts getting into the structure itself, the whole thing won't be much good. Uh, bathroom doors was another item for $6,000, uh, there are two restrooms that have metal-framed metal doors, these are exterior doors, they've been there for some time, and the, both the casings and the base of the doors are beginning to, uh, to rust away. Uh, committee found two high priority and four medium priority votes on that. Uh, this takes us on to sewer major improvements. The committee didn't actually, uh, opine on this. Uh, the sewer department came to CIP, uh, with a request saying, well, we're thinking it's gonna be about $340,000, but there's a longer story to that, uh, and one that I think may affect your operating budget in, in a couple of years from now, so I'm going to, uh, delve into it somewhat. Uh, there was a municipal agreement, uh, signed with, between Pembroke and Allenstown this spring, that gives, uh, Pembroke additional sewer capacity equal to about 622 homes. Uh, in addition to that, there's a requirement, uh, by the, uh, Department of Environmental Services to update the clarifiers at the, at the Allenstown plant. The, uh, the effort there is to improve the quality of water being discharged into the Merrimack River. That's an $11.5 million project. So I was contacted, uh, by the sewer department back in June as a prelude to their preparation for CIP, and they said, how do we, how do we budget for this? How do we break this out? So I got a copy of the intermunicipal agreement and copies of warrant articles that were approved by the voters in Allenstown, and as it works out, Allenstown gross appropriated the entire $11.5 million, so Pembroke, there's nothing to appropriate for. And then reading the fine print in the, uh, in the, uh, intermunicipal agreement, the town of Pembroke is nothing more than a super user on Allenstown's plan. Allenstown builds Pembroke once a month, and the Pembroke Sewer Commission aggregates that and sends it out in quarterly bills to the sewer users. Now, what that means is that as Allenstown gets that project underway, they will apply certain grants and other things to help mitigate the cost. And beyond that, uh, there were numbers that were worked up on what would happen to, uh, user fees, and I was able to work with those, and I would, my estimate is that the minimum impact of user fees would be an increase of 8% with a maximum of as high as 33%. Now, the reason that should be of some importance to the school board is, you have lines in your operating budget for water and sewer, it's not gonna hit you in the budget you're putting together this fall, but it's gonna come to visit in, in future years, and when it comes to visit, will really depend on how well-developed that project is and how much Pembroke is built by Allenstown as that project is completed. So that's one that you wanna, uh, keep your ear to the ground. Uh, it, it isn't gonna be big, big money, but they're large percentages, a large percentage in any line, given what we've had to cope with the last few years, uh, could be problematic, so certainly you don't wanna be taken by surprise on that.
Chair can ask a question about that?
Sure.
So, I, I think in the past years on NBC, yeah, this, this has been going back and forth for a while, um, there was talk at one point about possible date agreement with Concord to run out that, so is this thing that was signed in spring, I'm assuming this is a long-term deal, the stuff with Concord's off the table, like, we're kind of, the town Pembroke is sort of settled for a little while, or is that not?
Uh, we're settled for a while, the deal with Concord is, uh, it's on a back burner, it's not a dead issue. And in fact, the, uh, the new intermunicipal agreement has language that allows Pembroke to explore that possibility with Concord. Uh, right now, there are other issues on the cost feasibility, and the rough plan was to divide part of Pembroke so that the flow went toward Concord for part of the town and toward Allenstown for the rest. Uh, given the additional capacity that we, we've been granted with the new IME, doesn't seem to be a lot of, uh, incentive to move in that direction.
Please.
Um, now we're actually gonna get into the school CIP issues. Uh, school district vehicle replacement capital reserve request, uh, $10,000, that got two high priority and four medium priority votes from the committee. Uh, there's no plan to replace any vehicles, uh, in the, in the coming year, so, uh, moving on to school building capital reserve requests, uh, from surplus, $155,000, got five high priority and one low. Don't recall where the low came from, but...
Wasn't me.
What was it? Change. Uh, this is a, this is very typical, I mean, we, we've been doing this for a long time, so you've got expenditure items, uh, replacement flooring for $20,000, committee voted four high and two medium. Roof repairs, uh, five high, one medium. Uh, moving on to the school tech capital reserve request, uh, there was some lack of understanding about what that was all about, it's a request for $10,000, and it got, ended up getting four high priority, one medium, and one low. And the explanation that, uh, that I provided to the committee was that, uh, when technology and computer infrastructure became, started becoming part of the curriculum, in order to carry out that curriculum on a daily basis, that infrastructure had to be reliable. And so if you had a situation where you lost a piece of equipment and it had to be replaced right away, you didn't wanna wait till the March town meeting to get money to do it. to get money to do it. So that capital reserve was created for that purpose in order to be able to deal with those situations. And I think that's why the committee voted four high priority and one medium. There's always somebody that doesn't like things. So we had one low. School site improvement capital reserve request, 200,000. It got two high, two medium, and two low. On the expenditure side, replacement of the Pembroke Academy track for 450,000. Again, too high, too medium, and too low. Now, again, on this item, I really have to dig into it a little bit. I did some reviews on the balances. There's currently $392,000 in that account. So you don't have the 450,000 that you need to do the track repair. There was nothing for that capital reserve voted in last March. So that means the earliest window of opportunity that you have to put more money into that account is if you get a warrant article and it is approved this coming March. Traditionally, in fact, I think without exception, that funding only becomes available in December. So you won't see the money coming until December of 2025. And that being the case, this project was, the thought was it was going to be done in 2025. You're not going to make that target. Then to throw a little bit more bad news on there, I don't know where the $450,000 estimate came from. But there's an article in this week's Manchester Union Leader. They're replacing the track at Livingston Park. Very similar to the Pembroke Academy's track. Their price to get that done, $743,800 was the bid. So I think that you're going to need to go back and revisit the cost estimates on that project over the next year or so. And school equipment capital reserve request from surplus, 25,000. Got five high priority and one medium. And then replacement cameras and maintenance. This is similar to the cameras situation that we had at Safety Center. Committee looked at that. Mr. Coughlin explained it. You've got a hodgepodge of equipment. Doesn't all play well together. Committee voted six high priority on that replacement. So unless, there is one other thing I wanted to mention. Something unusual happened for CIP this year. We had a presentation from the Central New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission. And that presentation was on range roads, which was really somewhat of a misnomer because what they're really talking about is class six roads. And there were references to the last time that there was a, the town plan was reviewed and whatnot. And there were some interesting things about the range roads. There were many references to it. And about a third of the people that responded when survey was sent out wanted to build out the range roads and turn them into paved, passable ways. About a third wanted to shut them down and turn them into paths and put them into preservation and perpetuity. And the other third didn't know what a range road was if they're standing in the middle of it. So the reason I bring this up is that they did do a very good presentation. And it opened up some possibilities. There should be a balance between conservation and development and the need to get around. If you have an accident on Route 3 in the wrong spot, you're not going to be able to get to Concord unless you go to Huxit and go 3A or go to Epsom. And maybe if you're lucky, you can use North Pembroke Road to get to 106. And one of the possibilities that they were talking about was opening a section of the third range road. And that would make it not convenient, but possible to get to 106, probably from an extension across country road or Church Road. And I thought that that was an item that the school board might have some interest in. And you might want to be aware that these discussions are taking place. And the reason I thought that is that if you've got to get a bus to the Hill School and you don't want to go up Pembroke Hill Road or you can't, and there's another way to get there, that might have advantages for you. And there may also be some advantages in scheduling. So I wanted to create awareness, if nothing else, that this is going on. And there are materials that are available on that from Central New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission. The presentation was made to Selectmen. It was made to CIP. It was made to the planning board. But I think that there were probably a lot of important boards that were left out in that. And so I wanted to mention that to you.
Was that on the recorded meeting, Jerry? Is that online?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, in fact, it's online twice. They did, the Selectmen was a recorded meeting and CIP was a recorded meeting. And that, unless you have questions, concludes my report for this year.
I have just one, just a clarifying thing. I think it was 60,000 for the cameras at the Safety Center.
Right.
Seems like a lot. Is there a lot of cameras? Or does that include backend software and the controllers inside and all that sort of thing?
It includes some very specialized components that allow it to communicate with the court systems.
Okay.
So that things that are recorded there can be used by the courts as evidence.
Well, I think they do have cameras in there that are now, they have digital cameras, but they also have analog, which they have to cross over and maybe talk back and forth to the systems they have in place right now, too. So, any other questions, Jerry?
Can I just ask a quick sort of follow up question? Has to do with the library and the pending hole in the building? I'm not sure, you know, when you give those most, does that mean the appropriation went through that they're actually going to fix the hole or not? I don't understand how this works.
The appropriation will be part of a warrant article at the town meeting next March. If that's approved, then those funds become available in order to do the repair.
So that will go forward as a warrant article, then?
Yes.
Not the repairs in particular, but I think, I think, Greg, if I'm wrong, Jerry, because I'm on the town side as well. But the Select War builds the town budget. And they'll use those opinions in what Jerry just read as their basis for what stuff they want to fund.
That's kind of what I thought. I want to just confirm that.
Yeah, it's very interesting that the material, it looks like pie crust. It's flaky. And if you, you can rub away layers of it. And that's happened in enough places where it's beginning to go through. And for some reason, the north side of the building is affected worse than the others. South side doesn't look bad at all. And the material's been repaired a couple of times before the manufacturer actually came back and did some of it under warranty. It doesn't seem to like paint sticking to it. And that's a problem. The paint, rather than, it can't sink in. So it hardens on the surface. Anything that happens to it, it comes off in big sheets.
Thank you.
Basically, like on CIP, all we do is have these articles presented to us, hear the arguments for, and then we prioritize them. That's all. Doesn't go anything beyond that, so.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out. CIP does not say yes or no to anything. It just looks at it and says, this is really important. This is moderately important. This is not so important at all. And that is, can be used as a gauge for how important is it to get this into the budget? Do we really need to push for this? Or is it something, well, we could put it off another year?
Thanks for coming, Jerry. Appreciate it as always.
You're welcome. Is anything interesting going on in the rest of the meeting? You didn't sign the seat. It's recorded. I can play it back.
Oh, yeah, we are talking about electric buses. I know you're interested in that.
It'll be a brief discussion.
You know, I'll stage buses.
Okay, we are through number four. So five minutes, we got minutes. We got two sets of minutes for the third and the 17th. We're going to have to take those separately, at least for the fact that I wasn't here on the 17th. So I need to abstain from that.
Motion to approve the minutes from September 3rd.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Comments or corrections for 9:3? Okay, and all in favor of approving that of September 3rd, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Right. And 9:17?
Motion to approve the minutes from September 17th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. All right. Word for screen, electric bus committee.
Look at that. So anyway, two weeks ago, actually prior, I think we talked a little bit about it in our last meeting. But only myself and Ellen were present as well as Jen from the Energy Committee. Oops, my manager's up. So two weeks ago on Monday, I think that was the 16th or something like that. Yeah. Ellen and I, Ellen from Deerfield and myself, as well as Jen from the Pembroke Energy Committee were at the meeting. And we discussed the feasibility and the limitations that are going along with this whole project. Yeah, great, we've got the money. That money only pays for happy bus. So the remainder, so let's say there's 12 buses. Call that, you know, out of the five, we're getting $2.5 million. So we owe $2.5 billion, the remainder of the bus payment. That's going to be spread out over, let's say, 10 years. There's no defined timeframe on this at this point. It's too early. We had a presentation in August from Highland. They really, basically, the buses cost X ones. You know, it could be anywhere from $350,000 to $400,000 per bus. Where an actual diesel bus costs about 100 grand right now. They have never, in their, I think it was eight years, they've never started up a district's bus company, their transportation department. They've always worked with existing transportation departments at schools. That's why they are able to say we've got 100% success ratio. Therefore, not ever having to do it, they didn't have any numbers for us to anticipate. What we got was, we need to see your bus route. Need to see where your facility is going to be. Need to know what the infrastructure in the area is to get the power to where your terminal will be. You know, and come to find out, and I kind of knew this in the back of my head after reading. I'd forgotten about it. But we have, there was, the time of the award, we have six months to create a PO to secure the money. That six months is up November 22nd. There are abilities, there are ways. And I think we'd probably be okay because we can't appropriate any money until our March meeting. So I think that would be a legitimate cause for an extension. But not having any dollar amounts at this juncture doesn't give us a lot of leeway to work it into our budget as we develop it. So what I'm asking, and I didn't want to make this unilaterally because there were only two of us at the meeting. What I'm asking, this is, I thought about it. I'm just going to do this, I said to myself. I said, no, because it involves people adding things to their already busy schedules during the day. What I wanted to do was, thinking about doing was providing Highland with a bus routes from the SAU, both for Deerfield and for Pembroke. And then asking Mr. Coughlin to take a look at the site map that we have, property owned by the school district, where we could possibly put a depot that has easy access to the roads and the power, the electrical infrastructure. And then this would also be reaching off Dale and asking them how many hours per day or per week, whatever the case, do your drivers typically work in Pembroke and in Deerfield? I know the, the app to school stuff is mainly handled by Marston right now. But, and that's, that was another thing. You know, our students go back and forth at school on electric buses. But the diesel bus is there to take them to and from extracurricular activities. So that's another drawback to this whole thing. In the wintertime, the efficiency for a diesel bus is greater than that for electrics at this point in time. The benefit is that in the summertime, when the buses are parked, we could discharge those batteries into the grid at, you know, the peak usage times and earn money back. Again, that money would not come to us directly. It would go through Highland and then to us. So they probably slice off a little bit of that along the way, too. So what I'm asking is, is this something we should continue to pursue given the information we don't have at this point in time? Should we put more work on Mr. Coughlin and Patty Snapp at the SAU to get this information to me, to send to Highland and get a rough number? And that's all it's going to be, is a rough number? Because we don't have a depot. And we don't have the infrastructure going, electrical infrastructure going to a place, going to the depot at this point in time. So it's all going to be, you know, maybe better than, hopefully better than guesswork. But by Highland to give us a yearly cost on operating buses. And that's what I'm basically coming to the board with right now. Can we put more in this? I'll go to the meetings. At this point, though, it just doesn't seem, doesn't seem feasible. And again, in the timeframe we can get, you know, because initially we didn't know we had to have that PO for six months. And initially, we didn't know Highland had never done this before. So this is, this is what I'm asking of you. Should we move forward to get a rough idea, which we probably can't even use in a budget this year anyway? Thoughts?
Do we happen to know if Deerfield has talked about it? What they're thinking? Or is our meeting first and there's?
You would be more privy to that than I. I think they were kind of skeptical.
Meeting is tomorrow night. But I think Ellen was sort of with Gene on, okay, well, let's go to one more meeting and see, and then go back to our boards. I think it was probably lukewarm. Although they didn't take an official vote, I think we've been trying to work as partners with Deerfield and Pembroke. Obviously, one of us isn't going to move on without the other. But I think once they realized that you had to have a PO within six months, maybe get an extension and the month work. And once, I think that Ellen relayed the same information that Gene did, that they've never helped anyone start a depot. They really have no experience with that. It's going to be really hard to get numbers for March. So I think they were, they know you're going first tonight and then tomorrow night.
I just have to say, I know the buses have always been a major issue on my list that I wanted to take care of. But I just don't have the warm and fuzzy feeling that this is the way to take care of it. At first, it was great. But I feel like the more we delve into it and get deeper in, the less and less I'm feeling good about it.
Yeah, I would, I would kind of agree with that. I do think it's worth, again, Gene, I don't want to put more and I don't want to, especially since I'm the new person. I probably get it. Though I'm stuck with that.
Okay, okay. But to your point, Kerry, this is not the solution maybe to the problem, but the problem remains. So it probably would behoove us, maybe with a strategic plan, to think about what it, how do we move forward on the busing question? It feels like we're trapped in a loop right now that we can't get out of, and that's probably why this looked really attractive for a second. But the underlying question of, you know, we, we can't really sustainably continue on this path either. So we probably need to be looking at some kind of alternative. And maybe just start knocking out some numbers, what does it look like to start an electric depot? What's it look like to start a diesel depot? You know, are there, I have this sort of, you know, fantastical belief that if you went to, you know, certain corporate partners, they might wanna help sponsor, for instance, an electric bus depot or something like that, like maybe, maybe there's a way to create some community partnerships on something like this that really helps out. I don't know the answer to that, especially if we kick energy back into the grid, maybe that helps, uh, you know, but at some point, this isn't the solution. We could wait for another one to roll down the road. Stuck in the same place, so.
Yeah, I agree, it kinda seems like sunk cost balance here at this point, like, like you said, just every time you learn more, that one gets a little bit cloudier, a little bit less. I, I mean, personally, I'm not even really interested in taking that next little step. I don't see, from, from, you know, my experience on MBC, like, I'm sure they'd give us an extension, but we'd have to get at least to July one, right? Because even though we can make decisions in March, we don't have any of that money really until December, like Jerry said. And it just, I don't think we can, even if we wanted to, I don't think we could do the proper amount of, of research and preparation that this needs to even bring it to the voters in a responsible way anymore. I, I don't think that's possible, um, at this point, so. To me, it's a waste of Gene's time and, and the SAU staff's time to even keep asking questions, but that's just pretty sense.
I agree.
To be clear, I, I think that electric buses are in our future one way or another, I hope they are anyway. It's just, doesn't seem to be what it was originally advertised.
I totally agree, and I agree with Ken that they need to stay on our, our list as we figure out our categories, because we do have a bus problem. And this may not be our answer, but we gotta still work on it.
I guess I would qualify my, my answer a little bit and just say that if, if our friends in Deerfield felt strongly that they wanted to take one more step and attend one more meeting and provide that information, I, I'd be happy to work with them on that. So, I mean, if you want, if you wanna pass that along to them before they make a decision tomorrow, but Deerfield is aye. And yeah, and whatever they decide tomorrow, too, you just let me know, because then, at that point in time, I'll make the requests for the stuff, or say, we're done.
Do you wanna take action, official action?
Yeah, I don't want a form of motion to, um, maybe a motion pending Deerfield's action tomorrow night to, um, withdraw whatever, withdraw our application to Highland buses.
Thank you, thank you, to anticipate that Deerfield is gonna wanna continue. I think they have the same exact response that you have, you know?
And, and-
Not because they want, obviously, a solution.
Yeah.
But if they do, if they do it tomorrow.
Yeah, and it, but if they do wanna, you know, Ellen and I had talked about this, and if they wanna pursue it just a little bit farther at least, just let me know.
Okay.
Let them know if you're willing to, and they fire off emails to whoever and say, hey, we need to see those bus routes and the, uh- Possible landing zone order.
So what are you thinking of qualifying your motion with? A motion to stop unless Deerfield has strong feelings they'd like to?
That's a perfect motion.
Motion to withdraw the application with Highland regarding electric bus options at this time?
It was pending, yeah.
Pending.
Oh, Jerry's got it.
Deerfield's open.
Got it. At the risk of letting on just exactly how old I am, when I was on the school board more than twenty years ago, Pembroke ran its own transportation, uh, system, and it was decided to outsource it back at that time. So I think that the, some of the key questions you wanna be asking yourself as a board right now is, do I wanna bring the transportation model back in-house? Do I wanna add a, uh, a transportation director? Do I wanna be responsible for the hiring of those bus drivers? Because you're looking for people that are specially licensed and certified, and they're working first thing in the morning, doing who knows what in the middle of the day, and then in the afternoon. And then a whole other subject is, if you're going to do that and you're going to use your own buses, do you wanna buy them or do you wanna lease them? Uh, would it be easier to sit, if you're gonna bring the whole thing in-house, would it be easier to do it with a diesel fleet? Because the real carrot for electric is if you've got grant money that makes it cheaper to do electric than it does to do diesel. And I went through this with a, uh, a town trash truck last year, and there are a lot of complications in there. And the only thing that made that, uh, really advantageous was the fact that ninety-five percent of it was being paid for with grant money. If you can't make it to that point and you're still saddled, and we had the facility, and we had the drivers and everything else, you don't have that advantage. So I think you really need to, my suggestion would be to look at this from a very broad point of view. You know, do, are you trying to make a commitment, an environmental commitment to go electric? Uh, or are you just bringing the transportation model home? And if you're bringing it home, is it something you can deal with? Thanks for allowing me to give you the input.
Thanks, and those were, and we did ask some of those questions of Highland, and they had no answers for them. We also asked the question, in ten years, when those buses have to be replaced, how much are they gonna cost? Have you projected out there? Nope, we haven't done that yet, which kind of, and I'm, right after a CFP meeting with the fire department, hearing that that hundred sixty-three thousand dollar fire truck is not one point two million. You know, if you, our, our, our chief can tell us that, but they couldn't tell us that, that kinda sounded me a little bit. But yeah, a lot of those questions were asked, the transportation director and hiring, the bus, the Highland hiring of drivers was, was put out there and-
Yeah, the, one of the other issues we had with the town trash truck, we wanted to be certain it was going to be serviced in Concord, not in East Oskoche somewhere. So depending upon who builds that vehicle up for you, there are ranges that those things can travel without having to be recharged, but if you exceed that, you've got a new problem.
Yeah.
So, you know, where are they coming from is also a key question.
Yeah, and that was, again, let's use Bloomberg for example, a bus manufacturer. They might be a local dealer here in Concord or Manchester, whatever, but they actually stated that a lot of these dealers don't know how to work on these buses right now. You know, and that was another drawback, not in the big city, so they are asking these concerns.
Have a good meeting.
Thank you.
Um, I think I'll, but I'll try. Um, make a motion, no, Sandy, don't delete what you said, this is something, what you said was, yeah, what you said kind of works.
Don't, what's the age, just read it and you can say that's my motion.
Sandy, read it, come on, please.
A motion to withdraw the application with Highland regarding electric bus options at this time pending Deerfield's or unless Deerfield is strong, they either like, yeah.
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on this? All right, all in favor of votes, please say aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Fantastic. All right, thanks Gene, appreciate it. All right, exec board, Kerry, I can just share.
Can I just ask, do we, are we, do we have someone from the school that might wanna do his part first?
And the connection?
And-
Yeah, yeah, we can move, we can move.
Wanted to have a way to-
Do we have another one? Let's move it all the time.
All right, I think, I think a few of us know what this is, but we'll let the end of introductions on anyway.
Uh, good evening, everyone. I wanna introduce you to Pembroke Academy sophomore Campbell Nimison. Campbell is an impressive young man, student senator. You may recognize him, he was one of the students who spoke last spring, um, immediately following the, you know, unfortunate results of the district meeting. A cogent argument and nuanced to the point where I think, uh, some of his adult counterparts could probably, you know, get a lesson from. So, with that said, Campbell.
Thank you. Um, as far as our Senate report goes, this is homecoming week, that's the big thing that we're dealing with right now. We, our typical events were flag football, the homecoming bonfire, and the homecoming dance itself. We cut the bonfire this year, uh, and it's not going to return for the foreseeable future. Just because there's a lot of safety concerns associated with the event, and given that it was so unstructured, and there wasn't really a whole lot of engagement within the school, we didn't feel that it was worth it to continue, given the safety concerns. But we still have flag football that's going on this Thursday. We have Senate members staffing at all of the concessions and admissions are all taken care of and set up. We have the homecoming dance this Saturday, October fifth, after a home football game against Kingswood. The dance is seven to ten P M. We are working with admin, I believe as of right now, we do have our chaperones square away, so we have enough chaperones for the dance. We're expecting a pretty similar attendance to previous years, so somewhere in the range of four hundred to four hundred and fifty kids. And officers aren't privy to the discussions between our advisors and the police department, but from what I understand, we have a police presence at homecoming squared away as well. The only other thing, aside from homecoming, is we have a touch-a-truck event at PA on Saturday, October twelfth. Once again, Senate's going to be there to help with concessions and admissions. Senate doesn't participate in discussions directly with the suppliers of those vehicles, but our Senate advisor, Ms. Fontaine, has, I believe, acquired fire trucks, police cruisers, SWAT vehicles, and a Black Hawk helicopter. So, again, I, I don't have too much information if you want that, but if you wanted, if you had any questions, you could reach out to Ms. Fontaine about it.
Thank you for inviting this, I think, tends to, that was very nice, flyers went out to invite those students too.
Thanks, yeah.
Do you know when it starts, Campbell? The touch-a-truck?
So I believe the entry that starts at nine or ten, I would have to check that for you, I believe it's nine.
Okay, thank you.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, so homecoming is a fun version, right?
Yes.
Is that, and that's for the sophomore class?
For the sophomore class.
Well, do I remember that the bonfire was for a separate, for a different grade level?
The bonfire was for the seniors, I think.
Um, I can take it, thank you. Um, it was, I don't think it was the senior class, I can't remember exactly which class.
But it was not the same one that the dance?
I guess my, my point is, is there an event that's replacing that for that grade level to, to still kind of? Well, and it wasn't for, um, if I remember correctly, because it's very hard to release the comings and goings of-
And fire their machine.
Yeah, so it was more about the vending, you know, the food, and, um, you know, like with homecoming, with all of our dances moving forward, we are only selling tickets resale. We're trying to make the unknowns known, and, uh, bonfire, as Campbell, um, has said, presented more negatives in terms of safety concerns and unknowns than it did in terms of, you know, fundraising, capacity.
Do we have any questions for people?
Sorry, I jumped ahead on that.
Thank you. I say the same thing every year, and I, I know it's possible that you wrote here with your father, but you are always welcome to leave when your report is over. Um, and we also understand if you can't make meetings because you have more important student stuff to do than just homework. So we're always happy to see you and get input and hear what's going on, um, but also know that we understand that you've got stuff going on, and, um, you're absolutely welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting and see all the very exciting things that we do, but if you, if you gotta go, we get that too. Thanks for being here, we appreciate it. Thank you. Yeah, let's do it.
Exec Board met on the twenty-fifth. We could, we received an update on the SAU budget from Amber. It was suggested that the SAU provide a summary sheet for the increases, kind of like what we do for our budget, so that, because some of the towns are getting some questions about, you know, what, what are, what are they getting increases? Why is there an increase? What is this for? Why are they, you know, what do they do? So it was suggested that maybe that would be helpful, um, so Amber's gonna present that during, to each board during her budget presentation for the next few months. Uh, we discussed the TLC lease, uh, the building is owned by the, by the Allentown District, but they're possibly, I think it's in the works that they're gonna be selling it to the town. So that's kind of up in the air, but we did, um, discuss the lease a little bit. Uh, we have a full board meeting October ninth, one, which is a Wednesday at six P M. We're gonna be discussing the budget, obviously the SAU budget, um, and also we will be discussing a little bit the, uh, template for the, as, uh, sorry, for the superintendent evaluation. We received one, um, a template from Keane, and we, the exec board decided that we liked that format and that we're gonna, we're gonna use that one, but we're also going to, uh, discuss it as a poll board, just to see how and when we wanna move forward with it. And, yeah, that's it.
Cool, cool, yes, but I already, I already forgot it. Does anybody else have any questions?
No, actually, I have one more thing, I'm sorry. We, we also got, I'm sorry about dates. Sorry, that was, that was an important thing, I should've led with that. Um, so Allentown is completed for, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three. Uh, Chichester is completed for twenty-one, twenty-two. Deerfield is a little bit lagging behind, but they are understanding because they obviously aren't going for any bonds anytime soon. So they're kind of in the, uh, their field work is completed for twenty-twenty-one, um, and then they should be getting their report anytime now. Uh, this is a busy season, this is the busy season for auditors, so they're doing what they normally have for scheduled work, so that's why we're on a little bit of a holdback. Uh, Epsom is, uh, field work is completed for twenty-one, twenty-two, and then we are completed, uh, up to twenty-two, twenty-three, and they're going to be starting our field work sometime, I think, until fifteen.
Absolutely, no. It's not on there, so I know, and I can go for memory, but oh, sorry.
All the field work is actually done. Yeah, so those dates that you went over are the reports that we've received, so their field work is done, we're waiting on the report. So that's, we're in a little bit better shape, but I know that wasn't made clear on that sheet, so thank you for, um, so it's great that we are just waiting, and once they're done, they're doing current audits with all of their, um, districts now, and then they'll get back to writing our reports. So we're pretty happy with what we're at.
Cool, I remember my thing. I'm gonna go on a very short soapbox here, um, and some, so you had mentioned increases. Um, and I thought, went through other channels of town MVCs within the SAU, um, upset still because they still haven't wrapped their heads around the pool of increases in the SAU budget. So I'm gonna explain that again, right now, for the millions watching at home. But, you know, it's being repeated as we're hiding money, or people are getting two raises a year, or whatever. So, again, um, for public application, we are on a different calendar than towns, we have to have our budget stuff in at the same time and vote at the same time. So our raises don't necessarily happen at the same time, so the way that we do that is, in the budget, for the coming year, we hold, we reserve some money in a budget line that is dedicated to the raises that that staff are going to get in the coming year. It's not delineated out to individuals yet, so say we have a hundred thousand dollars, that's four raises. In the course of that bus and its approval, in the course of that budget year then, the people that make those decisions pass out that hundred thousand dollars between the people at the SAU office, and when we look back at that year after it has closed, their salaries will be increased by that amount compared to what they were before, and that reserve line that we have for that will be zeroed out. So it all balances, we've been doing this this way for a very long time, and there's nothing nefarious there. If anybody has any questions, please call me, and I can show you how that works. Sorry, I just felt like I gotta get that up there. Anything else? Any questions on exec board? All right, we got a report in the drive from Josh, for facilities. Do you want me to read it? Is your voice okay? Okay, all right, sure. All right, so Josh says, "The facilities crew has been busy accomplishing the following within and with our contractors. Our facilities are fantastic for the opening of school, the crew, both inside and outside, were extremely hard over the summer, and it certainly showed for day one. I would be remiss if they did not receive a huge shout-out for all they've done. Many of our yearly inspections have been completed to include I A Q survey, fire panels, fire extinguishers, and fire suppression systems. Our woodship boiler has received its annual clean at Pembroke Academy. PA, TRS, and Hill School had a surprise check from the state nine-one-one department for E one, E nine-one-one compliance, and all went well. The grange ceiling has been completed, the project was sponsored by the Moose Plate Grant. TRS and PA received many replacements." Uh, T. R. S. and P. A. Received many replacement sets of exterior doors over the summer. These projects were funded, uh, by the N. H. E. D. Safe Grants. More window film was installed on exterior windows of entrances at T. R. S. and Pepperd Hill School. These were also funded, uh, by the Safe Grant. P. A. and P. H. S. Received their three-year A. H. B. R. A. Inspection, which has to do with asbestos. This will be the last three-year inspection for P. H. S. As we moved all known asbestos from the building. Our crew went through many, uh, P. D. Opportunities as the school year approached. Vacuum training, um, for Mike Stanton from Market Advantage, universal precautions, workers' right to know, John Deere Gator training, back injury prevention, and the aforementioned asbestos training, to name a few. We received our new John Deere Gator. Please let me know if you have any." Thanks, Josh, for doing that. And that'll bring us to principals. Late to begin to meet guys. You know, start with Wendy.
Well, good, slow down.
Okay, so, we got a lot to talk about. Um, so, uh, we have a lot going on, um, at Hill School. We, um, our third graders are actually taking their first field trip next week to Odorn, which they, if I said that right, I say it wrong every year. Um, usually they do it in the spring, but with the changes to our curriculum, they're really trying to tie things in, um, to, so they, their units kind of all match. So they're going now week because it goes with their literacy unit and their science unit. So they're really excited because it gives the kids a real-life experience of what they're learning in, uh, the reading that they're doing right now, as well as the science unit.
Is that the type of one?
Yeah, that's the one where they, yeah, they love it. Um, so that'll be interesting. I'd like to hear their feedback on that because in the spring, it can be kind of hit or miss depending on the weather. Um, Ms. LaRose, she's our music teacher, has started fourth grade chorus this year. Um, she was really excited, and then I do believe she wants to try to see if maybe some third graders will be able to join. So that's something she came to me about at the end of last year, um, and is gonna see how that goes. She's really motivated. It's a co-curricul, yeah, so it's after school, um, and it's one day a week. They started today. Um, I got to, was in a meeting next door to them, so got to hear all of that, can't wait. Um, another co-curricul that we have is art club with Ms. Murphy. It's hugely successful. Um, she runs kind of like a session, and so she'll get as many fourth graders as she can throughout the year to attend that. So those are the two things that we have, um, going on. And in the last couple of years, that's new for us, to kind of bring those back since pre-COVID. Um, we have a professional day coming up on October 11th. And one of the things that we have scheduled for the first about three, three and a half hours is what we call C. P. I. Training. Um, it's crisis prevention. We, like I mentioned, one of the things that is impacting our day-to-day and just impacting everything general is really supporting students', um, behavior management. I don't really like using that term, but that's what most people kind of understand. It's just helping them regulate, like being able to be present with things. And then if there is a moment where they, we call it dysregulated, having the strategies for that. So things that the staff will be trained on is understanding, uh, through a trauma lens. You know, everyone comes with a different background, uh, different things that can caught, that can impact that basic tier of safety, um, and how to approach your learning and your learning environments. Because the kids can't learn if they're not able to attend because of various things that are going on. Um, they also get training on how to kind of de-escalate situations, you know, that are kind of teetering, um, and then restorative practices or conversations. So once a child's gone through what we call like a dysregulated state, we're able to process with them. Really having those tools is huge, um, to getting kids back either into the classroom and being able to attend to their learning. We haven't done it as a whole staff. Every year, we have select staff that tend to work more in that behavioral needs realm that do the full training because that does eventually go to, um, physical interventions, just having, you know, making sure that you're able to respond to those situations appropriately. So there's, uh, a very select few of us who are trained in that. We're just going through the actual, um, knowledge portion of it with the staff. Um, one of the things that's gonna be different this year, and we haven't quite worked it out, but I want to get it out there, is we didn't do our typical open house the way that we do every year. We did a meeting, a couple of years ago, we started doing a meet and greet right before school started. And it was mainly because I was getting a ton of calls from parents about, can we do a tour? Our kids are anxious, we're anxious. And so we said, let's start doing a meet and greet so people can get in the building before school starts, right? Parents can walk in, the kids can walk in. Um, and that really, really helped. And then a couple of weeks later, they kind of did the same thing, where they just came back in the building, walked through the classrooms. They had some work samples and things available, and the kids had a little bit more ownership of the room, but it was still very closely tied to it. So one of the things we want to do different this year, we haven't picked the date yet, is really, we want to communicate more to parents about what the kids are learning and understanding that and where they are in their progress. And so we want to do a curriculum night. Um, we have our S. C. L. Team met last week about it, and we're still trying to figure out what the best format is. And once that date will be there or is out, then we'll get that out to the community. But our goal is not just to, like, not just have the little fun things, you know, a lot of the, like, extra projects and stuff like that, but really what are the kids learning? What do you expect to see when they come home? Um, because our staff has, they've done so much in the last couple of years, and we really want everyone to understand that and be a part of that. And one of the ways we can do that is bring parents into that conversation. And we have a couple of other, uh, things to go with that. So hopefully, we'll get that nailed down, and then we can send out that information. Um, and then there are kind of two other things I wanted to chat about. These are more kind of budget-related. You had asked us to share, you know, maybe something that is an impact right now, and then just something that was an outcome for us as far as the budget. So one of the big things right now is, um, the support for our kindergarten, our kindergartners. Um, our littles are coming in. Just so you know, we, I meet every week with our teams. Um, so we get, we get a really good pulse check on what's going on, what they need for support. And it's, it's just definitely a challenge because over the course of, it started, I would say it started about 10 years ago in education, exacerbated by COVID, but wasn't a COVID-only problem. I think it's important that you know that, is that the skills and the, that the kiddos are, our kiddos are coming in with are, um, different now. So we have a lot of, um, a lot more needs with emotional regulation. Think of it in terms of, I don't get what I want, now I'm on the floor having a full-blown temper tantrum. That, as, if I'm the only classroom teacher in that room and there's 15 kids, and I have a kiddo having a temper tantrum, I have a choice to make. I am gonna support this kiddo, but then I have 14 other kiddos that also need support with things like that. So that's where having that additional, we call it a response team or different things like that, that are able to help. It's very frequent in a kindergarten room. It's not like it's just a one and done. Um, a couple of other things that they're coming in with that are vastly different, the body awareness and just the awareness of the world around them. It's, and that deeply impacts when you're in a room with 15 other kids and you are not aware of your body. And, you know, what that can do to a room is very challenging to manage. Our kindergarten teachers are phenomenal. Um, but it does, it impacts them having that. And then another one is self-help skills. We have seen, and this was just going around on our, on the New Hampshire principals, the number of students coming in that need toilet, still need toileting, not coming in potty-trained. We have to act, physically assist them, um, that takes an adult. Some kids are scared of the bathrooms now. They don't like the noise. They don't, they don't want to go into a stall. It takes a lot to train a kiddo to go use a public bathroom now because we have one bathroom in the kindergarten. So now just imagine if you have 60 kindergartners and they're using the bathrooms, the level of adult support just to get them to use the bathroom. It takes weeks, sometimes months, to get them to the point. That doesn't even talk about like zipping and buttoning and tying the shoes. And it's one of my favorite things when I talk in there, how do you get 16 of them dressed to go outside for, for recess and then back in undressed? Because those self-help skills aren't as developed.
So I need to make sure people understand the lack of support is because we had to cut.
Yes, we had to cut our four general ed paraprofessionals from kindergarten. So that's four less adults that are able to support all of this at a time. So that's, right now, it's all on the classroom teacher. And then any of us that are there to help, um, any other additional support staff is there as needed. Um, so those are things that, it, it's a huge impact right now, and we're just working to support them every day that we can, or every, in every instance that we can. And then the last thing. Um, we had, we did, you know, one of the things that we spent a lot of time on with Hill School in particular was the use of our building because of space being a very big concern. Um, and I know we had shared a lot, um, with the visioning team and the renovation team and things like that. So at the end of last year, when, um, we had to make all the adjustments with staffing and everything like that, we pulled our visioning team in, and that was a team of teachers that had worked for several weeks with the architects to, like, to decide what the priorities were for the building. And then that influenced the designs that were coming out, right? So we said, are there any things that we had already done the work to prioritize that we can address with the availability of space in our building? Um, because that's what we had as a team decided we needed for our programming and things like that. So after that team met and we took a look at everything, and some of the things that we were able to actually address quite a bit um, in the current state of those priorities that we wanted. So, um, things like our special educators are now out in each grade level. So they have close proximity to be able to support students, especially in third and fourth, where the class sizes are a little bit higher. They now have a little bit of overflow space if needed to pull students for a quiet work environment, and they're right there, there's not a lot of transition time being lost. Um, special education, we had designed like a file or office room for confidentiality purposes because there's a lot of compliance, so they now have a space. It's separate from the conference room. If you ever attended a meeting with us, lots of people needed to get in there but couldn't. Our staff space is, um, one of the things that the visioning team had talked about was we feel very divided as a staff because we have an upper part of the building and a lower part of the building. And with the merger of the buildings and with COVID and everything like that, there was not a sense of community physically with the building. So in the designs, there was a centrally located, like, staff lounge, lunchroom, whatever, any community space you want to call it. Um, and so we were able to do that, right-size it, has light in it. Um, and then everybody could come to a central location. We, uh, have appropriate-sized workroom for our staff right now, so copiers, things like that. It's now appropriate. Um, also, the lunchroom is not where the bathrooms are. That's a big positive in our building. Um, we now have, one of the other things designed in that, in the new building that we were able to do is a professional room, so we meet daily with teams. We also have that bookroom that we talked about. Everything was centrally located, so all professional resources, materials are there for where our coaches can do the work and our teams meet, and that's used daily, um, for lots of things. Um, we were able to bring in everything from closets and all the small places that we had kind of like nooks and crannies and put everything kind of where it belongs. So all the tech, digital and everything is in the library. All those closets are now appropriately organized and centrally located. And then with the modular T. L. C. left us, so that left an additional space. We have title on one side, and then we have use of one of the other side for special education programming that has very specific needs. Um, so that's kind of the overview of how the budget impacted the way we've laid out the building. And like I said, the visioning team went through and kind of checked off as many of those priorities as possible um, to address it. I know that was a lot, and now I'm done.
Appreciate it. Uh, questions?
I have a few things. Um, the first thing is the open house. Um, I hope that the curriculum night or whatever, as you were talking about, is scheduled soon. Because I know there's a lot of parents who did not achieve, attend meet and greet because either they were working or they knew that there's usually an open house that first couple of weeks of school. So, you know, some people are like, why aren't we having an open house? Um, the other thing is just a personal thing for me. It's, um, it's about the optics. And my understanding is that it's grade level that have lunch at the same time. So the teachers, like the fourth-grade teachers, have lunch at the same time. No, that's not correct?
Yes and no. We have large, like, it's cross-grade levels, so multiple grade levels go at a time and paragroups and stuff like that. So it's not like only fourth-grade teachers are eating, if that's what you're saying, like, yeah.
Just, uh, my, my issue, I guess, is with this, the, the, it doesn't matter what was put in that room. I know people are gonna be angry. Um, but the fact that now we have this big lunchroom where there's a professional room and there's other rooms, but we're saying that we don't have room for specialty of this or that, the other things. But now we have this big professional lunch, professional room here and a lunchroom here. I just feel like, I'm just wondering, is, are they ever, are all the teachers ever in there at the same time?
So we do have spaces now for all the special ed. Everything that we were cramped on, we are no longer cramped on. So we took all of the student need, like that type of stuff, special education, all of that was one of the first priorities. So the five special educators in a room, six that we had, no longer exists. They have, we have two special educators in the fourth grade wing because they service fourth grade. We have one, uh, special educator in third grade, plus our E. L. L. Support, who actually has a space now versus floating, uh, K. One's, uh, case manager, second. Like, everyone has a dedicated space that is appropriately sized and in a location to support, um, more closely. So that was definitely taken into account. Um, all those spaces are used at the same time. So when we're having lunch, the professional room is being used because we, that's when we do our team meetings because our schedule has to be staggered to make sure we meet all those needs. Um, it is, it is widely used by many people throughout, throughout the day and has been something that, um, has impacted the culture of our building positively. But we did have honest convers, like, we, like I had mentioned a while ago, we did have conversations about the impacts of the budgets and how all of that has a feeling with us, and we've done, we've had those conversations.
Thanks. And I would encourage you to continue to bring these, you know, repercussion from the budget cuts to us so that we can have them in the forefront and be able to provide them to the town when it comes time.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Any other questions? All right, well, cheers.
For one, um, so I'll kind of speak to some similar stuff, um, for Wendy. Um, we usually had our open house, uh, Thursday night. Um, and we typically do, you know, a drop-in style event. Um, so we, we held that type of event again. Um, and while I think we typically do have really great attendance, um, I think this past one was like unbelievable. Um, there were so many parents there all night long from six, right from six to, to 7:30. Um, you know, I think teachers and parents were, you know, walking out at the same time. So that was really great to see. Um, and I've had, had several parents come up to me, um, having difficulty finding a place to park, um, to get into the building and that there were cars up and down Academy Road. Um, so that was a really great feeling and really great to see how many people actually showed up. So it was a really, really great event. Um, pals, we always have pals, um, attend our open house event. Um, and just kind of a plug and a thank you for them. Um, we love to, to support them because they reciprocate times a million. Um, so they had a table there, um, and kind of just an, an update of their support for Three Rivers. Um, they have graciously agreed to, um, cover, um, the purchasing of three classroom texts for our seventh grade. Um, so kind of with the changes in staffing and combining our lit and writing classes, um, we've changed curriculum a little bit. Um, so in seventh grade, there was an interest to do a few different novels. Um, some of them were, were placement of books we already had on hand, um, but that were in poor condition, and one is a brand-new book, um, to seventh grade. Um, so thank you to pals, they're amazing, um, and we love them. Um, and then just to speak more to kind of specifically, you know, how T. R. S. has changed, um, since the, the budget meeting in the spring. Um, space-wise, you know, kind of similar to Wendy. Um, you know, with that decrease on each grade level of one teacher that did open up a classroom, um, on each grade level wing. Um, and we have used that primarily for our special ed population. Um, so there's the home base for our special educator in each grade level. Um, they use that to teach their pull-out classes for the kids that can't be in, um, regular classes. But we also use that as a space for any kid who needs a quiet place to take a summative assessment. Um, so that is like a general space used, uh, over the course of the day. Um, and it's been very helpful to have that dedicated space on teams and not be hunting around the building trying to figure out where these kids can take a summative and a quiet spot. Um, the other huge changes for us was, you know, The other huge changes for us was, you know, UAW-wise. Our UAW schedule is essentially a completely separate master schedule embedded into our regular schedule. And it's kind of mind-boggling how it all works together. And that's been and was a challenge going into the year, kind of losing our phys ed position, losing our librarian. We were able to replace our DLS, who has also taken on some of the library duties. And Mrs. Roy has been unbelievable and flexible. She's been splitting her time between her tech classroom as well as the library to kind of make sure all the students can, you know, access both of those areas and both of those, you know, types of instruction and education. The other major changes in our unified arts. Our DLS now teaches two classes instead of one sixth-grade class, so she's now teaching in two grades, sixth and seventh. And then the way the whole schedule worked out and the loss of that phys ed teacher. We actually have one of our music teachers teaching one phys ed section of fifth grade. So Mr. Lane was amazingly flexible in taking that on. He loves every second of it, thank goodness. But those are kind of, you know, the major changes that we've experienced as the year started and currently as we move forward.
Thanks. Questions? I'll put a point on a couple of things and just reiterate. I've heard so many teachers stepping up, like you just mentioned, Mr. Lane, and it's amazing. But it's also sucky. We're not compensating them extra. They're going above and beyond and, you know, they have to fight to get raises. And I personally don't think that's a way to treat highly-trained educators, but I'm eternally grateful that they're willing to do it. The digital learning specialists doing double time in the library. Again, super appreciative and glad that we have somebody willing to do that. You all know personally, I have ties to libraries and that's not a place that I want somebody temporarily. It's a super important place and skill that we should be providing better for our students in Pembroke. And Pals was the other one that mentioned that. And I think we try to mention them here a lot and thank them a lot, but just to kind of put a different angle on it. Almost every year, somebody at the March School District Meeting mentions, in my day, you know, if we wanted new football uniforms, we had a bake sale or we had a car wash. First of all, we do that kind of stuff. But I don't think people, and I think this is something that we should call out in March, the amount of money that we receive from Pals, if we basically have a volunteer organization that's doing bake sales on steroids constantly. And I think the community really needs to see dollar amounts of the amount of support that they really do provide our schools because you couldn't get that kind of money from bake sales and car washes. And we're doing it in addition and it's all volunteer. And if that support were gone, that would be a huge, huge impact. So I just want to really call them out.
Can I just mention one little positive comment? Hopefully we never go through this again, but I've heard a lot of positive feedback and personally I've seen it with my own eyes from Hill and Three Rivers. I think the space that you guys created for kids with differing abilities, non-special ed kids, to actually have a space in each one of those buildings where they can learn their own coping mechanisms and regulate themselves has been amazing this year. There wasn't space in either one of those buildings before. And not just myself, I've heard many positive things that last year that kid probably was trying to head for the door. This year they've learned they can go there, do what they need to do and go back to class. And I hope that we don't lose that, that I think it's amazing that it's working for a lot of those kids.
Any other questions or comments about Three Rivers? Thank you.
So no more clauses?
Okay, before I talk about, she's not going to say this, but Katie's done a great job this year. As a parent of an eighth grader, I'm satisfied considering. Katie?
I'll try not to talk too much. I'll just supplement with what my associate has said earlier. But talking a little bit about budget impacts. One of the obvious, but also most impactful things has been a lack of flexibility with our schedule when students need a change or are desiring for a change. And that has, you know, obviously limited our options. We have had more upperclassmen this year than I think we've ever had in my nine years here utilizing East Art classes to take, like for instance, civics or honors US government. And they're doing that because, not that we're not offering it, we do offer it, but there are, you know, scheduling conflicts that they can't navigate because, you know, they're also in honors bio, they're right on versus this. And so rather than take like, for instance, college prep bio, they're choosing, you know, I'm going to take this option as an online college class. And then, you know, so these are just things that students are utilizing. And there are benefits to that and they get that experience. And, you know, it kind of, I think in a way, demystifies the college experience for them. But we are having more kids utilize that this year than we've ever had. I think that's just a consequence of having this flexibility. So that's another one. We also, just by the fact that we have less numbers, we have less supervision for students, particularly in what I would describe as unstructured periods during the day. Meaning before the school day starts, during arrival, during departure at dismissal, and then also those lunch periods in the middle of the day. Those are historically only staffed by the administrative team. So that was six, it's now five, but I just, I feel like I need to tell you that over two hours of each administrator's day at the A is spent doing those student supervisory things. You know, rather than like getting back to parent concerns, working on the budget, need ask accreditation, you know, little things like that. But also, you know, when you're talking about Mike and Wendy, Mike's ability and Wendy's daydream and their rules, that also takes up time for them when they have to go through, you know, an investigation for a bullying situation or some other event that's happening. So just to put that out there, that, you know, over two hours every Tuesday, so Patty knows this, but I sit in front of the gym lobby bathroom from ten fifty to one o'clock every Friday. I choose to eat my lunch on the other side of the lobby because it's a multi-sensory experience and we're good at it. But that is just another example of the kind of supervisory things that we do because it does curb bathing. You know, just less people target for us to.
Those rules are to a degree, we better served by hiring someone to monitor our bathroom.
So, and I'm sure this goes along with you, also, you probably get thrown into this role as a hall monitor now. I mean, every passing part of administrators and they're hall monitors. My district administration chair would be very proud. Nonetheless, some of the spaces, you know, we, as you know, we lost a tech teacher, but that space is now utilized for a transitional lab, which is a, basically a, you know, a consistent location with a consistent staff member for freshmen so that they can get work done. The other academic labs, that sophomores and juniors with a ten, that's in the duty schedule, so it's less consistent. You know, it's, you may have, it's one of three teachers you're going to see during the week. But in a transitional lab with freshmen, it's the same staff member every day. So we had in the past, when we've kind of had a crunch with rooms, we've had that staff member moved throughout the building and now they are stationary in a room that's straight up unfortunately because of the cup. But we've been able to try to make the most of it. We also have a science room that we turned into the maker space. The maker space used to be in the librarian's and was kind of supervised by our digital learning specialist. That position is cut. I didn't feel comfortable having expensive equipment in this space with a librarian who, you know, really just can't supervise this sort of footage adequately all the time. And so felt like we needed to get that equipment into a more secure place. And the science department was more than willing to kind of take ownership of that and, which works out really well because they are the best trained in the building, the most familiar with the equipment and are more than willing to support other departments as they utilize that equipment. So that is working out pretty well. They're working with Josh Gofflin to make sure that, you know, as they're setting up that room, that it's done in a way that is appropriate from a facilities point of view. But they have kind of taken on the lead of managing that and that equipment. I just want to, Campbell had mentioned it's homecoming week and there are a lot of really great activities and experiences. It does generate a lot of work for our athletic director and our facilities department. So I just wanted to kind of hand it to them. It's always, they do a great job and this is a big week for them and it will go very well. And then lastly, I was fortunate enough this year to be asked to be on the Boulder Center Advisory Board. And this is through the Southern New Hampshire University School of Education. And they asked me to see if there was a classroom teacher who would be interested in doing that. Kristen Doyle, who's a social studies teacher with us, is doing that and we just had our first meeting today. So more to come on that, but that's been a good partnership and we've been able to do a lot of great things with Southern.
Awesome. Thank you. Questions? Your earlier comment about these online substitutes, do you see trend lines or patterns with particular kinds of requirements or specific subjects or things of that nature? Do you see that more frequently than others or is it more of a large pod, what you said?
I've seen more of a trend this year. And I think that is more representative of that one unique conflict in the master schedule. In the past, we've had students taking all sorts of different classes. Even, you know, taking online English classes, just, you know, like for instance, if we have a student who had a plan to graduate early, the state of New Hampshire requires four years of English, so they have to double up on that at some point. That's a great way to do that. What was noticeable this year is so many students taking the same class and it was, you know, just simply a consequence of that conflict in the center.
Others? Thank you very much. Thank you all. Goodie. Consent, right? We have a paper?
Talk about that trip for a second. What grade level would they do?
Our sixth grade trip, we've done it for as long as I can remember. Mr. West is the coordinator of it now and he is amazing at organizing it. But the kids spend four days up in Maine and I don't think we hear a single negative thing about it. They come back all raving, staff and students, about how great the ecology school is, the staff that work with the kids, the type of activities they do. So it's an amazing experience and, you know, I hesitate to guess that every single sixth grader looks forward to going and we try really hard to get every single one of them there.
Any questions?
Amy, I haven't mentioned it many, many times, and this is just a side chat. It's a little early for the budget season, but we talk about it all the time about the DC and ecology. If the school board maybe wants to have some kind of maybe policy scholarship, I know that they have put it in the budget item to help offset, like the prices are really high this year. Like I had one went to DC last year, it's double this year. And I feel really horrible about the amount of students that I'm hearing that are not going to DC because it's over fourteen hundred dollars. So I really think as we head towards strategic planning in our budget, if we can talk more about it, you know, we've talked about it before.
I respond to that? It was good timing. So this morning, Katie and I, we actually managed to retain ten thousand dollars in that line this year to offset field trip expense. So we talked about the two programs and this is, this morning is when I learned how much the DC trip was going to be. So Katie and I have plans to sit down and decide how we're going to distribute that ten thousand dollars and wanting to make sure that some of it is set aside for scholarship for kids that can't come close to affording that and then maybe use the remainder to offset the cost of a little bit for each student. So we're working on that, but ten thousand is not close, but it's something.
All right.
I don't know if we've gotten our stipend this year or not, couldn't tell you.
Usually people comes in around Christmas, I think. So my proposal would be for us, for fourteen, yeah, just usually, I think when my kids went, it was six, maybe seven.
And my five days.
Five days, yeah.
I'm not wrong though, because last year, it's almost double compared to last year. It's not double. I think the price tag was nine fifty last year. It's fourteen hundred this year.
So, yeah, I'm wondering if the rest of the board would opt out of your, our little stipends to throw into a scholarship fund.
I have a stipend.
So, yeah, basically, I'd be willing to do that. Yeah.
I know, I know I had some personal conversations of just finding out, like, other than word of mouth, teenage girls, who really wants to go and like, I think the guidance counselor, they probably have a good idea of like, who actually really wanted to go and their parents were going to let them go but can't. Because I think there's community members and stuff that would help with that fun, like, yeah. But I think that they know better, who are those people, identifying them first, because.
I guess board members, if you want, don't want to hear stipend back email.
Yeah, it has to be written, yeah.
Were you serious? Did you not know? It's like, you know, but I, yeah, listen, I think it's going to fund your private check. I think it's five hundred dollars. I think, yeah, I think when the, the way that taxes they take out, I think the check is like four hundred and sixty bucks or something. I do want to say that out loud though because it's only about a third of what the select board gets. Long as you put the COF COFs in there too.
Which third?
Oh, might just add one more thing.
Pals, so just another Pals plug, they are giving us eighteen hundred dollars to help offset, you know, specific students that are significant for this program.
Okay.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
The sixth grade ecology trip for TRS. I'll second it.
Any other questions about it? All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, we don't need to do many, right?
No, and then the delegates' assembly is not the law for nineteen, so we do have one more meeting.
Just a suggestion.
Yeah, and we, we're, we're tableing a policy, we're going to have a policy this time.
You know, no, it's okay.
No, Patty says Patty Chase reviewed things we sent over, so.
I have an unexpected absence. Sorry.
Who did I?
We're done, I was pretty impressed. Carrie and I, yeah. But not to burst, not to burst everybody's bubble, but some of the policies that we recently approved have been updated by the New Hampshire School Board of Statistics.
These kids today started to start over again, so I started looking in those.
Do we, I, sorry, I misled being a little bit, I don't, I don't recall that we have any one big item for our next meeting anyway. Because we won't have a...
It's the budget, your principals are presenting.
We'll, we'll have one then by then?
Yes.
It's all right, okay.
Right, it's next. Thank you.
Let's try and remember if you've, if you've got any.
Like the goal is no. Yes.
Okay, so we do have something.
Yes.
So, we've got a little bit of time. We don't need ninety eight. How long is the revision on your meeting application?
I don't know how you're feeling about it, but they're very eager to have a commitment and a contract signed, so I told them that I, my understanding was you were going to talk about it, so I didn't know.
I think we kind of, I mean, we didn't make a decision by any means because we weren't the board, but I think we kind of all discussed that it seemed like a no brainer and maybe we were missing something. If, if it's not a no brainer, I mean, it seems pretty straightforward, it's not going to cost us anything.
And the lawyers are going to review the agreement anyway, so, I mean, you know, from what was presented to us, I feel the same way, it was like a, a no brainer on that one.
I didn't want to incur any legal fees in a contract review unless I knew that that's what you wanted.
Yeah.
So if you want me to send that out.
Yeah, if you need to.
No, I'll just let him know that you talked about it, we're going to send it out for review and then we're back.
Okay. Are you with that Ken?
Unless you want to put up some panels in the roof of your house.
We have one.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'm sad.
Yeah.
Watch his play.
Um, yeah. So how about this? Honest question, who's read all of the resolutions for the school association?
I don't know.
Oh yeah, okay.
Well, I was doing a...
I read about two thirds of them. So we'll do that next time. So let's talk goals. Who wants to start? I, I mean, I largely, it's a nightmare, four goals a week had last time were continuing.
Yep.
Does anybody have anything new that they want to put emphasis on?
I just had mentioned, I don't know where it's going to fall into the goals, it's going to be in something we've already established, but I had suggested that one of them be the superintendent evaluation and then the other one being an audit presentation each year once the, when the audits are done and we have our reports, having the auditors come in and just do a quick, you know, here's where you're at, these are the things that we told you last time, need to be worked on, this is what's been improved, this is what's still outstanding. Because I had a little bit of a conversation with Amber at the exec board meeting and she said, there's some things on, and I wish Gary was still here so he could hear me say this, but there is some things on our audit report that will forever be on our audit report as, you know, what do they call it, directives, because, you know, we have people who can get into the checkbook and can get into the account, but each member that can get to it has different rights to it, but they think that there's too many. The auditors have an opinion and that is that there's too many that able, that are able to access it. That's something that will forever be on our audits. So it would be good to kind of just yearly have that, have someone come in, present it, here's our findings, see you next.
Yeah, that'd be great and in fact, at the same meeting, I mean, we could maybe do that, I mean, I don't know what the schedule is for the audits, I guess, but having the treasurer maybe come in at the same time because we, you know, there's some a lot of people, our clerk and our president, we never hear from them. They honestly don't know what they do, so it'd be good to just check with them annually too, when that makes us to do it same time. Yeah, I like that. Does any, does anybody have some spare time and want to pull out what people have edited and like formalize a document for next time that we can just go down and ratify at our official goals?
I was going to, but that spreadsheet, I don't know who the owner is, it says it's view only and I clicked it and said, ask for rights, I can't type in there.
So I just accidentally...
But I'm one who created it, which her links.
Actually, I, or you couldn't see it and she said, oh, fix it. I don't know why you can't now, did you try it?
Yesterday, I tried.
You created it.
I did.
Just did something, has he been there?
Yeah, I think what I just did, see?
That was so sweet.
So Jean's going to update. Yeah. Well, here.
Yeah.
I don't find it ready. All right, well, we can work it out.
That's fine, I'll look at it again.
Yes, try it again, if not, let us know.
Yeah. Because we do have stuff to add to it from each category, there's some in the minute meeting of where we were at, the things that we could check off, so I can add some notes in there.
I actually don't have some, I, I don't know.
And then the only other thing is the strategic planning thing that I really think that we can actually do it, if we set aside a little bit of time, every work meeting, I think we can do it completely by ourselves. I don't think we're going to get stuck, but for a hundred and seventy five or whatever it was, an hour, we have a backup. I'm putting them on the spot, but I think Ken and I can walk us through it. It is not hard to do, we've done most of the work. I have a template, remember four, I think we can do it and then finally say we have one.
Yeah, I, I like that and I'll reiterate my position that I'm not a hundred percent sold that we need one and I only say that because we have annual goals that are, you know, consistent every year as far as the budget and policy and things that are our RSA, you know, derived responsibilities, right, and that we have at least financially tied five year-ish plans in CIP and to me, that's probably all we need. But I'm one of five and it seems like there's an appetite for this, so I would definitely lean more towards moving it ourselves, we have that ability, rather than previous suggestions of multiple thousands of dollars and, and if we have somebody that's willing to do an hourly rate, if not email, we want to bring them in on one of our work sessions to jumpstart the thing, give us some direction, fantastic, you know, but...
It's not hard, literally all we have to do is choose one or two categories for our next working meeting and everybody just says, this is the problem, this is what needs to be fixed, this is my idea, and I'll write it all down and that's how you get your pillar, your objective and who's responsible. It doesn't take long. It's a lot easier than I think most people.
From, from my perspective, the real, the real value of it is, it can take all of those things you talked about and put them in, put them in a framework that then adds in things like, here's how we're going to go about doing this and here's how we're going to go about, this is my way of communicating this effectively to the public.
Exactly.
You could put that in there and you could point to it and say, this is why we're doing it this way.
Okay, yeah, I do that, so, why don't we plan on that then, why don't we plan on, I guess to start, let's say forty five minutes at our second meeting of the month? If you want to, if you...
As long as the budget's not like...
You've got a budget.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Not like a half hour to tackle, like...
Yeah, starting next time, starting, but if you, if you could, for those meetings, give me a, something that I can have actually put on the agenda. I don't know if I'd describe it.
You just want like one of the categories and the things we're going to talk about so everybody can think about it?
Yeah, I mean, even just strategic planning, dash, category name, something, so that we're all thinking about it when we're going into the meeting, that'll at least get us started.
The only other thing that I had that, and actually like Ken mentioned it and I agree with him, usually you do like four, four to six goals on a strategic plan and it's usually one, three or five years, whatever we decide, but a lot of the stuff we've already written actually belongs like, can be mushed together, so it's not going to be quite as long, they, they intertwine. But the other thing I had was, I know I sent it to Patty and I, I know January is coming up, but I really love Hookset putting in their school board into the annual report for the town and I don't know if that helps bridge our community like engagement and I know that the school board and Hookset wrote that, but I think we have people on the board that would help you and not make you do it yourself, I think it's a good idea for us to think about it.
I think that most reports here are like one pagers.
Yeah.
And a lot of the stuff that they put in, the town gets from other people, so I don't think it has to be a big report.
Yeah.
Because it did.
Yeah, that was extensive.
Gets that, some of that, I think they just put it all together and presented it as a board instead of like Amber gives, you know, some of the, the budget stuff, we do some enrollment stuff, so we do that for you and then if you want to do just like a one pager specifically from the board, you do that.
I mean, I think it's a good idea, because we're, we're always criticized because our, our information didn't make the town report, our information didn't make the town report. If we, and obviously, there's a little meat here than our goal, which probably would be, but just to have that something in and say, hey, this is what we're working on and come fill the seats and they're all about it, you know, that kind of thing. I mean, I know we're constantly saying come to meeting, come to meeting, but maybe if that is in the town report, that reflects better on us, community.
Yeah, and, and I mean, I'd go so far as to say we could also include a second one pager, dispels out impacts of budget cuts last year.
Exactly, Wes.
I, for real, I mean, I think the town, the annual report is a historical type document and if you're looking at the history of the school and all of a sudden a bunch of crap is gone, an explanation of that, I think is pertinent. I, I don't want to make any promises because it is arrogant like here, but yeah, I think you can, you can put some effort into it. I have to look at the whole annual report and even see what's in there. Still, I gotta send my email again to try to get them to change our color. There's a pie chart on the back of the annual report every year that breaks down the budget for the school and it makes me angry because the pie chart is red, yellow and green. Red is bad, it is always bad in everything that everybody's does and it's, the town is green, county is yellow and the school district is red every year. I don't like. Okay, um, so, so somebody, yes, if you get access, if you want to pull that, get the stuff in there all together, put it into Word or PDF or something, it's not a spreadsheet.
Possibly, and I'll get out and then we'll save this to them.
If anybody has any last minute edits or anything else you want to add to that between now and next time, what I'm hopeful is that next time we can take a quick look at it, approve it and be done and not, because we're loading a bunch of crap on our next meeting, so hopefully this isn't a problem.
Any requests? I guess, can we, something that's upcoming, can we get that on that, our Facebook page? Just to get that started, get that out there.
I have to send an email because I did send it up, I got it all started at work and now I forgot the password. So I gotta figure out whose, whose email is the recovery email, but yes, if I don't have that done, if that Facebook page does not have a post on it by our next meeting, you can all, from Skagetti.
And can you share the name of it with, is I could like a search on the code now?
Yes.
That'd be helpful.
I will, I'll put some on the calendar. Yeah, it's a lot.
I mean, if you think I'm New Hampshire school board, you'd think it brought something up for me, but it didn't.
Yeah.
Because I'm just thinking if we can get that started and then I can boost on that, hey, school board meeting tonight, we're going to be discussing the budget.
Yeah, no, that's part of my fault, I will have it done before next meeting. We'll be at it.
I'm just, I'm just, it's okay. No, I wasn't, I've been, I don't, I don't, not that one.
We don't have any public here, I don't, we don't need non-public, right? So fill a couple of you, we, we did get an email, did you all get the email from...
Oh, yes.
Yes, I was negligent on that, I just assumed Patty was copying, she was not, so she doesn't know anything about it, some legwork that she's going to do, so we will discuss that later that you can get non-public.
Right. I didn't even know it was that either.
Is that it?
So we'll discuss that outside.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure do.
I think you can vote.
Yeah.
Hopefully I didn't.
A point. Nope, nothing. The chair.
Let me just, uh, yeah, so let me just announce, so next school meeting is October fifteenth here at six thirty, there's a full SAU board meeting October ninth at six in the CAF and I think there's a second one, is it the following?
Exactly.
Who beats? Twenty sixth, or twenty, twenty third? Twenty third, and the twenty third, so we will, on the ninth, the full board will discuss and vote on the SAU budget. On the subsequent meeting on the twenty third, it will be presented to the public in a public hearing for comments, I'm sorry, so we'll discuss it on the ninth, on the twenty third it will present to the public and open for public comments and then the SAU board will vote on that budget. So if you want input on the SAU budget, come to those meetings. I think that's it. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.